Yeah, September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two, six P M. We'll begin our meeting by having the pledge of allegiance, which will be led by Commissioner Raylene Wailing.
To the flag of the face of America.
Thank you. We have seven items on our agenda tonight. Let's start with a roll call. We'll start with Commissioner Knudsen.
Robert Knudsen, no conflicts.
Daniel Gonzalez, no conflicts.
Melissa Kendall, no conflicts.
Raleen Wallin, no conflicts.
Andrew South, no conflicts.
We'll begin with hearing item number one, Provo City Council. Housing Committee is requesting approval of an ordinance text amended in chapter fourteen point three zero. Accessory dwelling units, citywide application. Go ahead. We'll turn the time over for you.
Thank you. I'm going to quickly turn my time over to Malia from the council office. But just to give you a little background on where this is coming from. Over the past year, the Housing Committee for the city, which includes some city council members, have been studying this issue. And this is an attempt to slowly increase the availability of accessory dwelling units in the city. But with that, for the going through the specific language that was in your staff reports, I'll invite Malia to come for their explanation.
Hi, everyone. Like Aaron said, my name's Malia. I'm policy analyst for the council and been helping them work on A D U policy. If you remember last year, we passed to come into compliance with H B eighty-two, this passed by state last legislative session. In two thousand twenty-one, we passed a A D U ordinance, expanding use of A D U's. And this is further expansion. The council created this housing committee at the beginning of this year with the intent of slowly incrementally expanding A D U as a permitted use throughout areas of the city. So tonight what we have is chapter fourteen thirty, and there's three specific changes that the committee has come to. The first is here on your screen. You can see this, section five. So this is permitting internal A D U's in areas zoned primarily for residential use in all areas west of I fifteen. And this was done as a natural barrier within the city to kind of incrementally grow out A D U use. There was some concern expressed by those on the committee and in neighborhoods and citizens, and then also some staff as well about having A D U's start, starting the expansion of A D U's around the university. So we looked at different approaches to try and make sure they weren't concentrated right around the university, but instead kind of further out. And with the growth that's happening on the west side, but then also some interest from those living on the west side, we found that this would be a good way to start to grow the areas of the city to have A D U's. So that's the first amendment being proposed. The second one. There's like five controllers up here. No. I don't know which one it is. There we go. The next one is in section C on the left-hand side. So this is changing the occupancy limit within an A D O. So as it stands right now in the legislation, it is no more than two related or unrelated adults, together with any minor children of those adults, can occupy an A D O. The committee's proposal is changing that to three. So just increasing the A D O occupancy by one. So that's the second amendment. And then the final amendment is just at the end of the chapter. So this is the designation of a new zone. In this language, it says overlay districts. It should not say that. That is just me forgetting to change the language. Overlay districts is a holdover from what the ordinance was back in two thousand twenty-one. So that's just a typo on my part. But so this is the process through which people can apply either individually for their own property, but also if a neighborhood or a group of neighbors, really any, anything from a single property up to a big as a group would want to, apply to then have A D U's be allowed on their property or within their area with, in their properties. This is the process through which that would happen. And there was a lot of process and discussion about how this would look and the committee along with staff, we came to this conclusion because we found this would probably be. There we go. This would probably be the simplest for both staff and also for enforcement, and then also for citizens to be able to actually apply and have a process that makes sense to them. So I'll just kind of go over this. There'll be no minimum area for a new zone. So like I said, it could be one property. But then it can go up to as many as the applicants would like. And so to apply, you'll include the name, address, and signature of at least sixty-six percent, so two-thirds, of the owners of immediate properties who are in support of the adoption of allowing A D U's within that property or the properties applying. The owners of immediate properties includes the owner that is applying themselves. So they're included in that vote. And then for the sake of this subsection, immediate properties, and this is defining what that means. So common border or immediately across immediately diagonal from proposed zone. I shouldn't say overlay district, the proposed zone for A D U allowance. And so those specific words are just kind of what staff has recommended to us to make sure that it is all the same across other language throughout the code as far as applications like parking permit, things like that. So that's just common language that we have in our zoning code. So that is the third amendment. And I know that last, that third amendment. When I am explaining it, it sounds very simple, but it might not be very simple to you, and you might have a lot of questions. So please feel free to ask any questions. But those are the three amendments that the Housing Committee is proposing.
Any commissioners or any questions at this time for the planning department? Go ahead, Robert.
When you talked about the first one about A D U's as a permitted use in all areas primarily zoned for residential use west of I fifteen. West of I fifteen, I'm a, I reside in the west part of Provo. Used to be that when I would put up a fence and I dug a hole three feet deep, went to have lunch and came back, it was half full of water. Well, that means that a lot of basements, which I assume are usually used mostly for A D U's. You'll find less homes west of I fifteen that are able to have basements. Have they thought about that? Have they thought that through?
Yes, that, that was part of the discussion. And in effort to not only allow A D U's more generally to areas that are residential use, but then also realize that we wanted. Because there was concern about unable to enforce and to do this incrementally and to do this in a way that staff could handle in case there is a lot of applications or a lot of people creating A D U's within their homes. So this was kind of with the context of that on the west side, a lot of basements either can exist because of the water table or new builds, there might not be the opportunity to build basements. So that was always part of the discussion for context of how many homes would actually be allowed physically and practically to have an A D O within, within them.
On the second point, where it talked about you raising the number
Yes.
From two to three. It talks a lot in here on page three about single professionals that would be live in these A D U's. Why then would we need to raise it from two to three if we're just talking about professionals, single professionals?
Um, that was.
Understand why, why we want to raise it from two. Seems to me like if a couple lives in a basement apartment, why would they want to have the third person?
That's a great question. This was a discussion that we had. We actually brought this before we brought it to you. We brought this to the council during the work meeting, and they had a pretty good discussion on that. And I can actually send you the minutes and the video from that if you'd like to hear, but that's divided on the council. We did kind of take a straw poll on that. So there is some division on that. The argument that the committee saw to increasing it to three is just to, one, help increase the amount of rent that a landowner could get to help with their mortgage and help them afford to stay in their home. And then also too, there is a, I can speak from experience, there is a housing shortage, you know, for young professionals. And so this was in an attempt to not only increase affordable housing stock, but then also give opportunities for those homeowners that are having an internal A D O to be able to really utilize that. Yeah.
I have several questions. The city currently meets the state's minimum accessory dwelling unit by not prohibiting A D U's in thirty-three percent of area primarily zoned residential. Is this going to be increasing the percentage in the city?
Yes.
Much?
We don't have the exact numbers on that. We haven't done the math, but that's something that we can do.
I think that would be helpful in making a decision to know how much that increases the percentage. That would be helpful to us, I think. Second question. Do you know, in the county, what percentage of rentals exist in Provo versus the rest of the county?
That's not something that I know. I know that we do have that data, and it has been discussed before in Housing Committee, but offhand, I, I don't know.
That would be helpful, too.
Okay.
As far as number one, increasing the occupancy limit of unrelated adults. Is that going to be citywide, then? It would be increased on all A D U's in the city?
Yes.
And I'm assuming there, well, I know that there'd have to be parking sufficient for that. And so what is the parking requirement if you increase that to three singles in an A D U?
Then it would increase to three required off-street.
Plus the upper units.
Yes.
So that's a difficult thing for many properties to manage.
Yeah.
And how would the city enforce that?
How they are right now, we actually had the city enforce, I don't know his official title. It says Scott Johnson, City Enforcement Officer. It's probably not his real title, but we had him come speak to the council and also send out a really good detailed memo about how they enforce and how they're tracking A D U's. And they have good data even from last year in December, when we passed to meet H B eighty-two's minimum requirements, some data on how that they're tracking and enforcing on new A D U's. So the council, after seeing that and hearing that, and the committee as well, is confident in our staff to be able to enforce.
Number three says I conditionally expand the permitted use of A D U's in areas primarily zoned for residential use throughout the city. So are you saying that not only, we're not just asking for the west side to now have the A D U's, but we're saying anywhere in the city, we can have A D U's now?
Where is that and what section?
The overview, the under the overview, number three.
Okay.
Conditionally expand the permitted use of A D U's.
So it will expand in the west side, but then the condition for expansion in other areas throughout the city is that the third amendment, which is that process. So everywhere in the city that's zoned residential has the potential to apply to become A D U permitted, but it's not automatic anywhere except for areas residential, residentially zoned on the west side of I fifteen.
For example, I live in a neighborhood where we already have A D U's, but there are certain streets where it's not allowed. Would that make it so that it's now allowed anywhere within that residential zone?
Those within your area that currently A D U's are not allowed, they would have to go through this process to then have it be allowed.
But it is possible.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I have so many.
Yeah, you're fine. This is great.
Let's see. How would the city handle over occupancy? You know, that, that's been an issue forever. And I just wonder, what's the plan for handling over occupancy? Because my experience has been that people have a really great idea of how this is going to increase affordable housing, and it really looks great on paper. But in practicality, what happens is people from out of state buy these homes and stuff occupants up and down. And that's not what the city's intent is. So how do we, how do we prevent that? What's the plan?
Yeah, that was a really big concern on the committee and then also the council as well when we were discussing this in the work session. And so the committee went back and we, like I said, we met with our enforcement team. They walked us through how they enforce on occupancy, and I can get you the report that they sent to us because it was really helpful for the committee and the council to see that. But then also, shoot, I have another question. Oh. Internal A D U's, they have to be owner occupied. So that is something Housing Committee has on a list of things to look in further on how you can, how we can really track and make sure that these A D U's are owner occupied instead of becoming investor-owned duplexes in effect, which I have seen as, I was a student at B Y U, like those definitely exist. And so the committee is trying to make sure that we're increasing housing affordability for all, but then also increasing housing stock for home ownership and making sure people can stay and live in Provo. And so it is a really big concern for us, and we're working as a committee and then also as a council, but with our enforcement team to make sure that, you know, we have a good handle on that. But we did have a discussion with both legal and then Bill and Scott and their team. And we feel good about the city and how they're handling these things. So the committee and the council feels confident about that. I should say the committee, I probably shouldn't speak for seven people, but.
Um, one last thing, and that is page nine, talking about temporary absence application. So the owner has a bona fide temporary absence of three years or less for job assignments, sabbaticals, military service, voluntary service. And this gets abused. And I wondered what the city's plan is for making sure that doesn't get abused, or would it be possible to rethink this so that we don't have to deal with that? And the second point after that, the owner is placed in a hospital nursing home assisted living facility or other similar, similar facility, but it gives no timeframe. So sometimes people are put in an assisted living facility for ten years or five years or, you know. There's no time limit on that. And so they can always rent their home. It's just a matter, we're talking about having an A D U also. So that's not owner occupied now.
Yes, and actually, just last week, the Housing Committee was discussing this very clause. And we're going over, we're actually going to look into how this gets enforced, how this gets tracked, making sure that it is three years or less. That second clause there, I didn't notice, didn't have a time on it. And so I put a star next to it. So we'll go back and look at that as a committee. But yes, that is something that we're aware of, and I'm actually researching into enforcement of short-term rentals, but then also different aspects of the A D U policy right now.
Oh, I guess one other thing that hasn't been addressed, and that is, speaking of short-term rentals, happens when somebody wants to use their A D U as a short-term rental.
That is currently not allowed in code.
How would the city prevent that?
That, um, I don't want to speak for enforcement, and I just keep saying they provided us with information, but they did. And so I'll make sure to get that report to you guys. But yes, that's part of their process and something that they check for.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other commissioners have questions? I have a couple. On the A D U and rental housing unit or renting the license application.
Yes.
Do those include, are there requirements for a site plan that as, as part of that submittal where they designate where parking is and how many spaces?
Yeah, as part of a rental dwelling license and A D O, that is part of the, I'm going to say yes, and then hopefully I'm right, but we'll see.
Yeah, so the first step, you're talking about the second step with the rental license, the first step is the building permit. So with that building permit to establish the A D U, you get a floral plan, you get a site plan showing the parking and everything is required through the code.
We're not just kind of shooting in the dark and
No.
Will there actually be enough space for a car? Like we're, we have reference points with the the original building permit application and
Yes.
License applic, application. Okay. Anyone else have questions for planning staff? If not, I'll invite the, well, I guess you're the applicant, huh?
Yeah.
Let me see. Well, is a neighborhood, is there, I don't, this is a citywide applic, is this a citywide application? Yeah, any neighborhood chairs present that would like to take time to comment? Go ahead and please come up and state your name for the record and which neighborhood you represent.
Becky Bogdan, Lakewood, but I'm also the area rep for the everything west of the freeway. The comments that I have heard are concerned about enforcement. Enforcement already is bad, even though they have every confidence in it. It really isn't that great. And now we're adding more to their plate. So the concerns I've heard is, is this was enforced? Great. If not, that's not so great. So that's, that's what I put that way. My personal concerns are, we've heard from North Park, and all of their move-up homes there have been converted, most of them have been converted into A D U's. So once these have established their A D U in the basement, they usually don't revert back. On the west side, we need our move-up homes because as Mr. Knudsen has already said, most of our homes are smaller. And these move-up homes do have basements in them. And we do have issues like in my ward where it's really transient because we have these three-bedroom homes. Mine is, mine's a split entry, so I do have five bedrooms. And so we're some of the longer ones there. Personally, I have a child with autism, and so one day that would be great to be able to have an accessory dwelling unit for him, for, to give the house to him for income, for whatever. But is that necessarily what's best for the neighborhood? It's not what's best for the ward. For the schools that my kids go to, it's not what's best for them either. Franklin Elementary, where part of Lakewood goes to, half of it, they're in threat of getting closed down. Also, Amelia Earhart, which is out there by the airport, is in peril of getting closed down. We do need these people to stay in Provo. We do need the homes for them to live in. So they have a place to stay in Lakewood once they outgrow their three-bedroom home. So these are all concerns. And, and Public Works has come out and said the accessory dwelling units in the backyard are not allowed on the west side because of our sewer issues. So, you know, North Park has come out and said, thank you for those because that is helping us preserve these five, six-bedroom homes. And then they can have their rental dwelling unit out back. That's not an option for the west side. So that's also a concern. And then when we talk about, we don't want this right around the college. I'm sorry, U V U is not that far from Lakeview North. It's just not. It's just not. And so when we think about the west side and we think about how we're struggling with economic development here in Provo and how we do need a little bit more income in some of these areas, what is that going to do to the west side? Thank you.
I have a couple follow up questions if you don't mind. Uh, can you be, give a more detailed of how how a residence of an ADU negatively impact uh elementary school? I, I, I'm, and that, and then you mentioned a ward, I'm assuming a church affiliation, but what, how, how does a resident of an ADU negatively affect? Wouldn't it increase the membership rolls of a church, any congregation of a church or?
In ours?
Or possibly even increase uh population of a elementary school so it's not getting shut, shut down?
Well, okay, so you look, we did have an illegal ADU in our, in our area. Um, that family lived there for a few years. Their kids were gone by the time they got to the elementary school. So that wouldn't necessarily impact it, but when we were looking at, when we were looking at the west side area plan, okay? The principal came to me and she said, Becky, I need families that are long-term families. What hurts Franklin is the transition. People that come and they leave once their kids are sold. We don't have the stability of families living here. That is the same thing with my ward. They switch out like every five years. So we have a huge nursery. And usually when you have people with small kids, they're either in college, trying to support their family, trying to own a home, and they don't have time for church service. And so you have a problem there with trying to find people that actually fulfill the roles of the church. So when you have longevity in your wards, you have more people to serve than just those that are there that can maybe only pick up maybe a nursery calling? But they don't have the time in their, their day to maybe handle a young women's calling or a bishop's calling or an elders quorum calling? Does that make sense?
Yeah, it, it does. I, yeah, I, I guess I, I'll share my opinions later.
And normally when you have someone that has an upstairs downstairs, like in ours, you know, they find something bigger, they use this as a, as a doorway into a house. They find something bigger and they move and they either run out both the upstairs and the downstairs or they sell it to someone else who comes in, who's just starting out, who can do that and go forward until they find something bigger.
Any other neighborhood chairs present? We'll turn this time over to the public for comment. We're gonna limit you to three minutes per person. Please state your name. Oh, go ahead, Erin.
I'm, I'm obviously uh staff, but I just wanted to make sure that this was on the record. I handed out this email for this item to, to all the planning commissioners in the pre-meeting um from Steve LaPray, um who voiced concerns about this, this ordinance text amendment going forward. Just needed to get that on record. Thank you.
Yeah, it's all, all confirmed that we received this uh this evening and had an opportunity to review uh the email from Mr. LaPray, also Thomas Huber. Received emails from both of those residents. Uh, go ahead, if there's anyone from the public that'd like to comment, three minutes, name and where you live. Okay, seeing no public comment. Um, we'll go ahead and close public comment. And uh, Malia, are there any clarifying statements you, you want to make? Um, I want to give you an opportunity to address again, no? Okay. Well, invite the commissioners. Well, this will be our time to discuss and raise any questions or comments. Um, I'll, I'll go ahead and make a comment. Um. Under section, I guess subpart number four, uh, four D with owner occupied temporary absences. Um, like personally, I'm, I'm, I'm pretty in favor of those because a lot of these situations uh described in this include a, a financial, what would be a financial hardship. Temporary job assignment would have someone maintaining two residences, a sabbatical, same thing. Uh, military service, same thing. And there's also usually pay reductions in association with that. Um, same with voluntary services. Um, again, with the hospital nursing home assisted living center, that's another one where it presents a financial hardship where uh someone might be relying on income, rental income, supplement what's a very expensive hospital stay, nursing stairs, assisting living, let it stay. I'm, I'm appreciative of that. Would hate to see that go away. Any other commissioner comments? Go ahead, um, Mr. South, Commissioner South?
As I understand it, this uh, I mean, this is ordinance that's already in the code. We're really just looking at those three items to expand from two to three and whether or not to put it on the west side and then to give this conditional path for conditional approval in the other primarily residential zones, so. Um, I'm, I'm sympathetic to the challenge of, you know, needing additional housing stocks for Provo. Uh, there's, seems to be a lot of question about the enforcement side. Uh, and I think that probably is more broad than the scope of just the expansion of the current ordinance in these three areas. So I'm, I, I think that there needs to be more work done and we need some more information. I don't know that it's persuasive enough for me to say that we don't move this forward on, on these three items. So that's, that's the tension that I'm trying to, trying to sort out, but.
Clarified, do you, do you feel that if you had more time or more information uh that, that, that something a, a continuance would, would be helpful for in making a decision?
Yeah, I think, I think I could make it, I mean, I think I'm in favor of moving this forward and approving it uh as recommended by staff, but I think that there needs to be more work done. It sounds like it is being done. Not just on, not just on the three items that are here before us, but on the overall ADU policy or on the, on the ordinance itself. So I guess it's, yeah, I, I think, I think it needs more work, but I don't think it's enough to, to hold it back for me, so.
Just know, I'm, uh Commissioner Kendall, I, I, I noticed you kind of gave a facial gesture, you'd, you, you would like additional information?
I would like additional information and I, I think that once you do it, you can't take it back. And so I, I really do, but the implications are just a little bit better and how we're gonna manage this because it is a huge problem zoning and, and um as someone who lives in an area where it's a huge problem. Um, I mean, I can think of 10 properties right now that are out of compliance and it's, it's just, it's something that you can't get your arms around. And I would hate to add more of that without a better plan. And I think that we can come up with a better plan with a little more assurance that this isn't going to get abused because that's the problem and that really is hard for neighborhoods. So uh the comment of once you break up a home, it's difficult to go back and that's really true. Once you put an ADU in a single family home, people who come to buy that home, number one, if it's a family who needs more space, they're paying a lot of money because it has an ADU. The price of the home goes up because it has a rental property associated with it. So now you've made it unaffordable for larger families or people who have teenagers and want to stay there long term, who don't want to be crammed into two or three bedrooms. You have a hard time keeping them now or even having them buy the home because they can't afford it. Can't afford to buy that home and turn it back into a single family unit because it was priced as a accessory apartment. That makes sense? So that's one of the problems that we've seen in our neighborhood is that families can't afford the homes because of the, the apartment. Um, now you can say, well, they can, and, and yes, they can, as long as they don't intend to use the whole home. But as soon as they need more space, then they can't afford it anymore. Does that make sense? So if you want to have teenagers and, and have families that stay long term, more people would appreciate more space than less space. And um like I said, I, I've said before, I have a neighbor that raised six kids in 1,400 square feet. So, you know, she did that, but most people could not do that. That's difficult. And so I, I just think we have to be very careful with this. I agree, we need to provide um housing that's diverse and affordable for, for people and for um single professionals. I agree with all of that, but I would really like to see that we have a way of keeping this from getting abused and for enforcement before we make a decision on it because we're not going to take it back.
I would have to go along with Commissioner Kendall. If I had to vote now, I'd vote nay. I need, I think we need more information. I don't think we've got all the information we need. But I think she raised some good points of what we need to see in the future from, from the commission or from.
So if the planning commission would like to continue this, that's fine. Um, the more specific you can be in terms of what you're looking for would be very helpful. So the message has been sent loudly and clearly, enforcement is an issue. So we'll send to you the documentation that has been referred to and we'll have the zoning administrator here to answer any questions that you have at the next meeting. But any other information you're looking for beyond enforcement could be helpful for us to know that. So we're prepared for next meeting. Just to put some things in perspective a little bit, though, to give you some background that perhaps you don't have. Because of House Bill eighty-two, every city in the county had to enact legislation for ADUs. Several cities have adopted citywide ADUs. Springville is one of those. In fact, Springville adopted citywide ADUs before HB eighty-two came out because they could see the direction the ball was rolling. So they went ahead and did it. Believe in the first year they allowed the ADUs, they had eight additional ADUs. The second year or this year, they've had nine so far this year. Um, I don't know of another city in the county that has even two enforcement officers. We have six, plus the zoning administrator. Preparing the zoning doesn't work. We just had a call about an illegal occupancy situation in your neighborhood, Ms. Kendall. Uh, we sent an enforcement officer out, they knocked on the door, the owner verified that they were over, owner occupied, and steps are taken to correct the situation. So um if there are 10 cases in your neighborhood, please let us know what they are so we can go out and force on them. Driving by a property is very hard to notice if it's over occupied, okay? We rely largely on the neighbors telling us, hey, we think there's a problem here and then we go check it out. But anyway, if you could tell us what you're looking for, we'd really appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I have a question uh in regards to that. Um, it seems a, a couple of people brought up enforcement issues. And um I, I guess my question to, to planning staff and Malia would be uh, does code enforcement see that, that they're is their superintendent or whoever, do, do they see that they're adequately staffed and funded to pursue all enforcement actions?
Yes, it is the position of the zoning administrator and of myself as the department head that if this is opened, opened up citywide, we could handle it with the existing staff we've got. Because we don't believe we're going to have this rush for a huge number of new units. It, it just hasn't happened anywhere else in the state and it hasn't happened in many other states where we've checked into this. They're just, opening up this legislation doesn't open this floodgate, is what I'm saying. Because many people have a hard time meeting all the requirements that go into this. Parking is a big one, okay? Um, that's a lot of off-street parking that's required for the main unit and the accessory unit. A lot of lots just can't fit that, so you can't have an accessory unit there.
There's enough zoning enforcement staff and, and, but there's still complaints. It seems to me that maybe people aren't willing to rat their neighbors out.
Well, that is part of it. We have cases all the time that, that it's frustrating to me and that we'll proceed with enforcement on an occupancy issue and it's not unusual for us to hear from a neighborhood chair or for the residents around that saying, well, we're okay with that one. We like that family. Why are you enforcing on them? We can't make that distinction. If there's a problem, there's a problem and we go after it. But we frequently get caught between both, hey, enforcement's not stepping up. And then when we do, people are telling us, well, we didn't mean that house. That's not uncommon.
I have a question for you. Is the 33%, where are we at now in that 33%? It says up to 33%. Does that make sense?
We've adopted legislation to allow housing in 33% of our residential areas, which meets the code requirement.
About?
How many units?
Yeah, how many is, yeah, about how many is that?
I don't know that we ever projected how many.
I mean, I'm just wondering if that's, that's what you'd have to enforce.
Yeah, we never did a projection on how many.
I just was wondering if we're talking about enforcing it and how, how it, like is, how many are there? Does that include, is it trackable with that many? Does that make sense?
Um.
Thousands, hundreds, like?
How many do we have in the city? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
I, I'm sure it's hundreds, but I would say that, but I would say many of those are not legal. And I would hope that through adopting legislation like this, we'll be able to get a lot of those illegal ones legalized. That would be a good thing. Thank you.
Bill, you quoted statistics from Springville about their numbers. Do we have the numbers for Provo? Of how many new have been created this year?
Uh, we do. I don't remember off the top of my head, but again, uh zoning enforcement provides a monthly update. Every month, an update on what's happened the last month with the zoning enforcement. Let me send you the last few months of those. Because uh every month we talk about our residential dwelling licenses and how many.
Something to be good to know because if it's a hundreds or if it's five, it makes quite a difference.
Did you want to say something?
I do feel like there's a little more pressure in Provo because of two universities. So it's a little different than Springville, right? So there's more pressure for people from out of state to buy a home, put their students in the top and more students in the bottom. And nobody's living there that owns the home. That's the, that's the biggest problem we see. So there's a lot of pressure in Provo that doesn't exist in Springville for that reason, because we have BYU and UVU.
But, but isn't that a problem of, of homeowners and home sellers, like and who they sell to? Shouldn't they purposely not sell to an investor if they want a family in there or not?
You, you, you own a home and you need to leave and you want your money out of it and you'll sell it to anybody. I don't know anybody who hasn't done that. That, that's just the way it goes. That's the reality of it. And, and people also say, oh, we're gonna buy it and live here and they have no intention of doing that. In fact, there's a home that's being remodeled in our neighborhood right now. And I have been told that the owner has no intention of living there and intends to put renters upstairs and downstairs. Intends to break the law. The home isn't even finished being renovated. I'll let you know about that one.
Go ahead, um, Malia.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, um, our planning staff right now is actually putting together a moderate income housing report, which the council will be looking at on Tuesday. But they just sent me some updated numbers actually during this meeting about how many um ADUs we have in the city. And um we have 440 ADUs with a rental dwelling license. And in that report, um, which you can find online from work meeting um agendas from last week, but it'll be upcoming and will be published tomorrow for Tuesday meetings, but that moderate income housing report has a whole bunch of statistics on housing in Provo. Like how many are renters rented, owner occupied versus investor? The AMI for each of the housing units, all of that is in there. It's been really helpful to look over.
Uh, is there anything else we want to bring up, things we'd like to? Commissioner Whalen, do you have any? I get a little straw pull free on where you might be inclined of whether we continue this or?
No, I think we should continue, but I'm anxious to get the information that you said you would provide and that would be great.
I'd be curious if seeing that the it feels like the commission's leaning towards continuing and. Additional information I think would be helpful to incorporate into the report would be. So surrounding communities, what what type of ADUs they're facing? And then also similarly sized communities like West Valley City or. You know, top top five largest cities in Utah or Salt Lake City even. How they're doing their ADUs. For me, I. I look at the work we do here in planning is we're not just planning for next year and and five years and ten years. But we're really planning for the next fifty. And the way housing prices are going. Some people can't even buy a house without counting on. An ADU to rent. You have something to say, Malia?
Have a quick question to make sure I can get you guys all the right information. As a committee, we looked at different cities. But specifically, we just started looking at college towns because of HB eighty-two, how that differentiates. Between a college town with a thirty-three percent threshold versus a non-college town, which is sixty-seven percent. So would you like information just on other college towns like Logan, Cedar, St. George?
Yeah, Ephraim.
Okay. And would you also like bigger cities?
I I would like, like. You know, pop cities with populated of eighty thousand or. But some of our other Utah County neighbors like like Lehigh, just with the growth that they've had and some of these other.
We can get that. Not a problem.
Any, does any commissioner want to make a motion?
I'll be happy to make a motion.
Commissioner Neeson?
I would make the motion. We continue item number one. Provo City Council Housing Committee is requesting approval of an ordinance text amendment in chapter fourteen point three oh. Accessory dwelling units, citywide application.
There a second?
I'll second it.
Or. Let's vote all those in favor. We'll just do down the line.
Aye.
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 All right. It is five in favor for a continuation. We'll. Any of this to. If I don't know if you want to give a suggestion of how much time might be needed to collect that additional information. All right, we'll hear from you next meeting then. Hey, item number two. Item number two, Impact Signs requests approval of a sign permit per section fourteen point two, three point one, six, zero. Parenthetical one, Provo City Code for two signs at two forty-one West, five hundred South. In the ITOD interim transit oriented development zone. Franklin neighborhood and Mr. Ardmore.
Thank you. Okay, so this might seem a bit unusual for. Plan commissioners, especially those of you that have been on here for a while to have a sign permit come in front of you. The ITOD zone specifically calls out in the section on the screen. That all signs shall be approved by a plan commission prior to the issuance of a permit. So when this permit came in for review, I reviewed it and saw that section and and put it on this agenda. However, looking at the site, you can see it's the old Burton Automotive Shop there in ITOD Zone. Looking at the site and the sign specifications that were provided in the building permit. Staff has found that this permit meets the relevant city code. I I can also note that. If this is, because this is unusual, all the other signs within the city are just reviewed through a building permit by staff. We do have staff working on amending this this zone section. So we don't have to keep bringing these these building permit signs in front of you for the ITOD Zone. But but again, in summary, the sign, the signs provided in the permit or proposed in the permit. Do meet the the relevant city codes and we'd recommend approval on this. On this item.
All right, commissioners, are there any questions for planning staff? Okay. Will the applicant please come forward? Anyone representing Impact Signs or? The tire company?
They specifically asked if they needed to show up for this. I told them there we'd probably be okay, that I could probably handle the questions on the permit side of it. So I don't expect anybody to come up for the applicant.
Okay. Neighborhood chairs, this is in the Franklin neighborhood. Is there anyone from Franklin neighborhood that would like to make a comment? Please forward and state your name and address. Being no one from the Franklin neighborhood. Or any other public comment? Oh, yeah, anyone, anyone from the public? Go ahead, Ms. Bogdan.
I just had my car fixed there the other day. Love Barringtons. They are retiring, they sold out. I have no problem with it. They're down there by the railroad tracks. We need good business like this.
Thank you, Ms. Bogdan. All right, with that, I'll close public comment. Commissioners, any discussion running you want to have on the application? Okay. Does anyone want to make a motion?
Motion.
All right, Commissioner Neeson.
I would make the motion that we grant approval to him for item number two. Impact Signs requests approval of a sign permit per section fourteen point two, three point one, six, oh. One, Provo City Code for two signs at two forty-one West, five hundred South. In the ITOD interim transit oriented development zone.
Be seconds on the motion?
A second.
Right. With that, we'll we'll vote, we'll start with Commissioner Neeson.
Aye.
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 Okay, that is, the vote is five to one. For approval of the, I'm sorry, five to zero. I have an imaginary friend. Five to. Five to zero in favor of approving the sign permit. Well. Move forward to item number three. Colby Anderson requests project plan approval for a new warehouse building in the PIC planned industrial commercial zone. Located at thirty-seven fifty-two South Sierra Vista Way. This is in the Spring Creek neighborhood and. Planning staff, Mr. Wright will be presenting.
All right, thank you. Yeah, so this property here is currently being subdivided. It's a sixteen acre parcel. An industrial planned industrial commercial zone. It's being subdivided off and so a nine acre piece highlighted here in red is what is going to be developed at this time. It would be a hundred and sixty thousand square foot warehouse building similar to. Structures around it. All of the surrounding property is in the same PIC zone. And this property, this proposed development's been reviewed by staff and would meet the. Code requirements and would fit within the. The zone and the surrounding properties here. And. Staff has provided two conditions of approval. One would be that the remaining CRC comments are addressed and CRC approvals received. And the other would be that that subdivision that is going through right now, that that's recorded. And create this new lot. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have on that.
All right, commissioners, any? Any questions you have for planning staff?
Just have one question. What are the remaining CRC items that need to be addressed?
They're just from Public Works, like utility type things. So working through those now and just wanted to have that as a condition.
Expectation is there's no problems there.
Correct.
Yeah, do you feel the the elevations were. With the design of surrounding warehouse properties?
Yeah, the elevations you can see here are going to be fairly typical to what we see in that industrial area down there. Yeah, it would fit in. Everything like that.
Any other questioners for planning staff? With that, I'll invite the applicant to come forward. Is there anyone here representing? Mr. Anderson, is this is this you?
Adam Frankenberg, good evening. Denial Properties, so Colby submitted on our behalf. So I'm representing that applicant.
Do you have any additional comments you'd like to make on this metal?
I don't, and I and I believe the CRC comments have already. Responses and reviews.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant? No. All right.
Thank you.
Welcome. Anyone from the Spring Creek neighborhood? Neighborhood Chair for Spring Creek? They present, would they like to make any comments? Being none, I'll open up the. Hearing for public comment. Is there any? Anyone here to comment on this application? Please state your name and your address. Okay, seeing no one coming up. We'll close the public comment. I'll open this up for commissioners to discuss. Looks like there's no additional comments. Does anyone want to make a motion? Motion?
I'll make a motion. Motion that we approve the requested project plan application. Colby Anderson for a new warehouse building in the PIC zone. Located at three seven five two South Sierra Vista Way, Spring Creek neighborhood. With the following conditions, that the remaining CRC items are addressed and CRC approval is received. And that the subdivision plat is recorded that creates this new lot.
There a second on the motion?
I'll second.
All right, we'll move forward with a vote. We'll start with Commissioner Neeson.
Aye.
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 Okay, the vote is five to zero. In favor. Approval Director Pepperoni?
Great, thank you very much. As you can see, this industrial building in an industrial zone is a very administrative approval. There are other areas of this same development, the same Mountain Vista area. Where the planning commission has delegated to the staff. The ability to approve these buildings in an administrative hearing rather than coming to the planning commission. There are only a few lots left in Mountain Vista. And we would like to ask the planning commission to delegate those remaining lots to be able to be handled by staff through an administrative hearing. That means there's still a public hearing. That means all the notices to the public are the same. All of that's the same, but it just allows us to do it at administrative hearing instead of putting on your agenda. We'd like the planning commission to make that motion and approve that if you're comfortable with that. You can see how administrative these are. It doesn't seem to make sense to take your time on that.
Commissioners, do you want to have any discussion on that? We will need half a motion on. On a. On that, or is that right? Yeah, does anyone want to make a motion on that?
We can just add to that motion that we.
This is a separate motion, this is a motion to.
Delegate to staff to have administrative hearings. On the remaining properties in Mountain Vista.
Is this is Mountain Vista, is that a? And how would we designate this area properly?
Just referring to it as Mountain Vista, the Mountain Vista Business Park, Mountain Vista area.
Business park?
Right.
I'll, I'll make the motion. I move to. For Planning Commission to delegate approval authority for administrative approval authority to the. Development Services, Planning Development Services. For industrial project plans in Sierra Vista. Our Mount Vista Business Park. There a second on the motion?
I'll second.
Okay, we'll move with the roll call in favor say.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
That's five to zero, we. Approval of delegating. Approval authority for the Mountain Vista Business Park. The item number four, Dudley and Associates requests a general plan map amendment from a mixed use designation. To a commercial designation as part of an overall development plan. To establish professional office uses on the site located at approximately five fifteen North Edgewood Drive Riverwood Bottoms. I'm. Also going to read into this items, would that be all right if I read in items five and six or?
In my mind, item four was kind of on its own and then five, six and seven could be read in together. If that works for the commission.
We'll do that. Let's, we'll do that. And consider item four separately and on its own merit.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, there's Riverwoods, River Bottoms neighborhood. Mr. Ardmore.
Okay, thank you. So here we are, this is. Very much, as alluded by your your question, this is very much in connection with. The property across the river to the west. But for this item itself is just a general plan amendment. From the mixed use designation in the general plan. To a commercial designation in the general plan. Currently, there are two. One family dwellings on the. Within all those parcels with some accessory buildings. The majority of the land is vacant land. So the proposal would make this shift to change it to commercial. I think it's important both on this item and on the next item. I'll probably be kind of repetitive. But this is essentially switching. The property. In this mixed use is currently zoned medium density residential. This is essentially switching this land for this land to the west. Okay, so this is currently in a commercial zone or a residential zone. This is currently in a commercial zone. The requests are essentially swapping those two. So on this first request, again, the for now, it's just a general plan amendment to change it from mixed use to commercial. And that is to kind of pave the way for future rezone and concept plan that will be coming to you. From this group for professional offices. I also, if you're interested, if not familiar with the area, I have some photos here of of the current conditions of the property. That's all I wanted to say on this one. I should mention actually that neighborhood meeting was held on this item and the items five, six and seven. Back in February of this year. Back in February of this year, has been on Open City Hall since that time. Generally, there was support for, for these changes. With, with the concerns on this one being more to do with the concept plan. Part of it that, that will come to you at a future date with the height of the buildings and, and where the buildings are and where parking is and those details that would come in the future. But we would recommend approval, or recommendation of approval for this general plan amendment from mixed use to commercial.
Do we know if, if those, the two residential properties have? Are they occupied by any residents?
They are occupied, they're, they're. Being leased rented by the, the holding company that's proposing all these changes, so they, the, the holding company owns the land. But they are still occupied as far as I can tell.
And just so, we're, we're limiting discussion, is probably going to be answered in the other items, but is, are there plans for demolition of, of those residential buildings? Or are they going to stay?
Right, so that's, that's eventually the plan, those, all this area here, maybe it's shown better on the other map because it's a different color. So all that area in the gold, that would be. Kind of torn down, vacating, vacating the section of Edgewood Drive even. And creating office campus through this area with three to four. Or two to four office buildings and parking associated with those.
Do we, do we know the? Potential occupancy, like, like if there's. Building envisioned and office space envisioned, like how many employees do they expect to?
I, I don't have those details at this time, I think the, the reason to bring this forward by itself. Made sense to bring it forward because the other piece is moving forward with the rezone and concept plan. And we're essentially swapping. The commercial for the residential and for that to, to make sense. To staff, we were doing it at the same time, so you're not really losing any commercial land, you're not really losing any residential land in the city. Or in even in the area, you're just swapping the locations of those. But you will see the concept plan and the rezone, once those are ready, I think they're still detailing the concept.
Is, how, how does the? This change impact access to or use of Provo River?
No, this wouldn't affect that access to Provo River, that fifty six hundred north. Would still have access to the bridge, to the river, to the trail, none of, none of their plans would impact that. And specifically not this general plan change.
Do any other Commissioners have questions for planning staff? Being the, with that, I'll, I'll turn the time over to the app, the applicant to come up. Dudley and Associates, anyone here representing Dudley and Associates, please state your name and, and your title with the. Organization you represent.
Good evening, my name is Jim Ivory, I'm with Fulcher Pratt, we're, we're the developer, Dudley and Associates is, is. Our civil engineer and master planner and they, they prepared the application tonight. And if there's specific civil engineering questions, we have, we have Todd Dudley in attendance.
Commissioners, any questions for the applicant? Wait a second, we're, we're, we're just using this time right now for. With applicant to make a statement and if Commissioners have any. Questions and we'll move forward, if, if there are none, we'll move forward for, for the public to.
Yeah, as, as far as any statement goes, I, I think staff has done a good job explaining, you know, the, the, the overall concept, particularly what's, you know, as far as the general plan amendment. You know, there's, there's no real net gain or loss of, you know, developable potential, you know, traffic, et cetera, that's, you know, the. We're, we're, just like they said, we're flip flopping the zoning, we feel the office would, would be a better use along university. And that the, the medium density residential would create a, create a quieter and, and. More, more livable community if we pull it off a university and tuck it back west of the river. But, but yeah, as far as, I, I don't know if there's any specific questions you guys have for us.
What does it mean when it talks about connected by an existing pedestrian bridge?
The, the, that's what they're referring to, the bridge on fifty six hundred north, it's not a vehicular bridge, it's a pedestrian bridge, if you go out there now. There's K rails barricading it so you can only walk or maneuver your bike through, but a, a car can't drive across that bridge.
Um, just a question, have, have, have you guys provided notice to the, the residential occupants of, of plans for development and?
I believe those residents are on. Three month leases, you know, or like that continually renew every three months, so they, they, they are aware of. They are aware of the, you know, the plans to develop it.
All right. Anyone else have any questions for the developer of the applicant? Okay, you can be seated, now stay close, we, we might have some other questions as they come up.
All right, I, I won't go far.
The neighborhood, this is the River Bottoms neighborhood, is there, the, the neighborhood chair for the River Bottoms neighborhood, is, are you present? There isn't present. Okay, with that, I'll open up the. I'll open up the hearing for public comment, we will limit you to three minutes. We'll put a timer up, I'll, I'll ask if we could start the timer, let's start it after they've stated their name and address. But please come, if there's, it, it looks like there's some public comment, please come up, state your name and please give us your address. And we'll, we'll go ahead and, and start. Please come forward.
I'm Robert Harris. I live in that house just south of where they're proposing the zone change. I moved out there fifty years ago to get away from all the commercial buildings and all the heavy traffic. Now they're all following me out there. I don't like it. I. Have a, I have several concerns, bringing that much activity out there is really bad, if you check that intersection coming out there. That is a nightmare getting on and off that highway. They've had some bad accidents, they've been fatal accidents right at that intersection, it's not a good intersection for a lot of traffic. I have another concern, I have water shares. East Union Water Shares coming down from the north side. I have to have that water on my property to take care of the things that I have with garden orchard and all the things. I cannot afford to have city water coming in on my two acres. What is that going to do to my water supply coming in on the north side? Is that going to stay the same or is that going to be cut off? That's a major concern to me, the traffic is a major concern to me. Those are my issues. I like the solitude out there, that's why I went there in the first place, it's been wonderful, I hate to see it change. Thank you.
If I could ask a clarifying question, is, is your property, is it, is it within this, this red enclosure?
Yes, my property is right south of the red line. Two acres right in there.
Gotcha.
That's my house right in the middle.
Thank you for your comments. It looks like you might have some people with you, please come forward, we, we want to hear, we want to hear your, your thoughts on this, again, name and, and your address.
I'm Stuart Harris, I'm currently living with my father, fifty three sixty six North Edgewood Drive. When I've looked at that before, I thought that was mixed agricultural and that two acres where he's at, and now it shows up as commercial. So I don't know what the impact of this is. But I, I would want to check on that because what you're, what they're doing is taking the mixed use and making that commercial and then you'll have a small. Area right below that that is not commercial unless the zoning was changed, was, that I'm not aware of recently, within the last year, so. But that's still, when I checked before, I think it was mixed agricultural. So he is not, he doesn't have any plans to move at all and I don't know that the. Family would sell if you passed away, so we're talking about having that little block there surrounded by all commercial. I think that's something that should be taken into consideration.
Right, thank you.
I can just make a clarification, what you're seeing on the screen is the general plan, not the zoning map, he is right that his property is zoned agricultural. But the general plan is commercial, so that's the, the confusion there.
So just to clarify, he would be able to continue using his, his use agriculturally indefinitely.
Right.
Until.
Until he abandons it.
Until they abandon it, sell it.
That's correct.
Including not disrupting his water use.
I don't know how the water rights work, but our Public Works Department would, would better address that.
You have another comment, please state your name and address.
Lynn Martin, my home address is nine Suncrest Court, Durham, North Carolina. I'm here working with my father for a period of time. The question I have is, how does this impact his land? I think that's the biggest question we have is wanting to understand how anything done to the surrounding land will impact his land. Including the ways that he's disrupted, because before this is approved, we would like to know if it does impact his land and if so, how.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else from the public would like to take a? Time, just your name and your address.
My name is Jeff Germaine, I live in Orem. But maybe I'm a foreigner here. But I'm actually a part owner of a building at fifty two fourteen North River Run Drive. It's the white building right below the zero and the M in your word "commercial" on that slide. And I'm, I'm just a little concerned about the idea of the swap being an independent or disconnected event from items five, six and seven. Because there are some issues, I believe, regarding five, six and seven, and five, six and seven depend on. The land that is next to the grayish public facilities area, depends on that being made commercial. And there are people who are prepared to present some issues regarding that. Not only potential environmental issues, but also traffic issues. And so I don't know that it makes sense to separate those or disconnect those and this is simply a swap, I believe the swap actually implicates. Other issues that are yet to come forth before the commission.
Mr. Germaine? Thank you, thank you for your comment. Anyone else from the public like to make a statement? We, we really appreciate your input and it's helpful in. Setting things out. With that, I'll. I'll go ahead and plug, close the public comments and. Invite the applicant back up to make any, if you want to make any clarifying statements. Particularly in regards to the property south, Mr. Harris', property. He brought up some issues in regards to traffic. Water shares, water rights and generally how it impacts his land.
Certainly. First of all, as far as the, the issue of, of water shares, that, that was actually something new to me. We, you know, we, we've flown a topo, we have an ALTA survey, I, I thought I had a pretty good understanding of, of the water related issues, you know, on, on the property. But this was, this was kind of new to me, I know there's a well protection zone out there and there's, you know, and obviously things are sensitive, you know, when, whenever you're developing in close proximity to a river. So again, I, I would need to speak with him further to understand if, you know, exactly what, what exactly his, his concern is. But I, I didn't think that development of this property would have any effect on, any immediate effect on our neighbors.
Does, does your use or, or plan development, are you, does it include water rights and water shares?
Uh, no, it does not.
Anyone else have any questions that they might want to ask the applicant?
You speak to the traffic, how would, how would traffic get in and out of this use?
Well, we're proposing a termination of Edgewood or, you know, so Edgewood as, when you're coming from the south heading north, would, would terminate in our property and, and. You know, obviously there would be access through the property and it's been looked at by, it'll be looked, looked at by fire department, et cetera. But for, for all intents and purposes, Edgewood would end, you know, at the property, you could work your way through up to fifty six hundred north. And, you know, the, 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 the people working in the office would, would enter on and off of fifty six hundred north. And there, there are, you know, long-term plans in, in place between UDOT and the city of Provo as far as, you know, improvements at fifty six hundred north, but I, I'd want to refer you to your, your engineering department to speak specifically to those. But we have been cooperating, we've had a number of meetings with regards to traffic and future plans for fifty six hundred north, which include not only us, but our, our neighbor to the north and the neighbors to the, to the east.
Yeah, I have a, I have a question regarding this mixed use, were, were there ever any? Iterations of, of a planning that had a residential component?
We have, we've.
Like, like the River, the Riverwoods development, like?
We have, we, we have iterated and we've looked at a number of different schemes and, and quite frankly, a lot of this has happened in. Junction is, and as we've met with, with, with Provo staff and understood, you know, some of, some of the visions, the vision that, that Provo has. For, you know, for the university corridor, for, you know, a, this is kind of a monument or this is, you know, this is a, to, to some extent, a, a placemaking gesture in Provo as, as you entered Provo from the canyon. And so we, we have looked at a lot of different, a lot of different options here. And, and, you know, as far as overall, you know, density goes, et cetera. And. The, from an office standpoint, one of the, one of the. One of the requests that, that Provo had for us was to consider doing more rather than less office because there is such a, such a need for it that we, you know, and. But it's been the experience here that there's, there's some great businesses that start that grow and then they completely outgrow Provo and leave because there's, there's not the room for it. And so as we've, as we've looked at it, we found a way to, we, we think thoughtfully, you know, provide additional, additional office space here and, and to try to capture and keep some of these businesses here and, here in Provo. And, and still, you know, still, you know, be thoughtful as far as traffic and, you know, overall impact.
Anyone else have questions for the applicant? Follow up? Thanks, you have some, I can tell you're.
Mind if I step up and make a comment, I, I like context.
Just your name real quick.
Yeah, Keith Maury, I'm the Assistant Director of Development Services, I like context and I like stories. And so sometimes I think in a decision-making, it's helpful to understand context. Currently, the, the landowner could build residential project on university and office space on the other side. They have an entitlement right, they could submit a plan and we'd be obligated to do that. As they evaluated their vision for what they wanted to do, that didn't seem to make sense and we agreed. Commercial space makes more sense up against university and residential kind of protected by the river and. Removed from university seems to make more sense. The developer that's working on this has this concept of creating a startup community. Where, um, people that are budding entrepreneurs or have some startup concept could come and live in the residential component of this. And while they're living in that space, work in the office space and be mentored or tutored about how to grow a company and be successful. So that, that's the model that they're trying to design to. And so that's why you see some of the relations that they, that they're talking about and why they didn't think about mixed use, for example, up against university with a mix of residential and office space. The concept is that would be the, the co-work space, the shared space where they brainstorm and collaborate and are mentored on how to grow and start businesses while they're living in this residential community. So you kind of get this energy in this environment. That, that's kind of the concept of what they're trying to, to, uh, to envision. And they've been very, very thoughtful. We've, we've spent a lot of time with them discussing impacts, um, making sure that the river is protected, making sure those transport transportation corridors are preserved. I think originally the, the concept of shutting down Edgewood Drive, um, presented problems until we started to contemplate the impact of the residential neighborhood to the south. And the fact that by really ending the road as a, an actual road, but allowing access through the parking that would be, that would exist there for the commercial project, you reduce the traffic impact to the residential neighborhood to the, to the south. And, uh, we felt like that was probably a good thing. Um, the developer wants to create this walkable community where the people that are living in the residential space bike, walk back and forth between the, the residential and the, and office space. And we get that, we understand that. We were concerned that at some point in the future, there might need to be a road. So we asked them to design so that if that bridge ever needed to be widened and turned into an actual bridge for vehicle, vehicular traffic, it could, it could accommodate that. And so they agreed and they've done that. So right now it's designed to be pedestrian access, but ultimately it could at some point be converted to a, a bridge and a transportation corridor if we needed it to be. The, um, intersection at fifty-six hundred north university is a, is a significant problem that UDOT's aware of. Since that's their road, um, we've worked with them to share these plans. Their, uh, their, their intention to do something there depends on funding, of course, like everything else. It also depends on what the construction, um, opportunities are on the east side of university. And so some of them, some of this is dependent on planning for that area because it may take a realignment of Canyon Road as it transitions into university. And that could impact the nature of that, that intersection. So some of this is a little bit of a wait and see. Um, and as this development starts to happen, they'll be putting together funding, they'll be finalizing plans. And then we'll be able to determine exactly what UDOT's going to do. But ultimately that will be a lighted intersection. And so as the development happens, though, there may be mitigating steps that take place where it becomes only a right in, right out, or, or something like that. And I don't know, it's their road, but those are things that could eventually happen to try to manage some of those issues. Yes.
Yeah, I just had a question. Can you address, is there a need for more businesses, office space in Provo? Is there?
Yeah, and I think the, the developer alluded to that. When I started here in January of twenty twenty, um, historically Provo has been known clear back to the days of Word Perfect and Novell as being this incredible, um, startup and community where brilliant minds create incredible projects and companies grow to a certain point and then they leave. Qualtrics is one of the few companies that believed in Provo and has been able to find a place to stay. There's others, Vivint and, and others, but many have, have left. And so I, I had really wanted to change that dynamic. I think that's going to be difficult with the amount of property that Provo has, but this area represents a potential where some of that could begin to happen. But I think what the developer really wants to do is, is to expand on that startup energy that already exists that we have in our startup building, um, some of which you're seeing in Rev Road and One Million Cups. Um, the stuff that happens to the technology transfer BYU, the Nortia Medical College and Rocky Mountain University on the south end of town. This would be an extension of that and kind of another startup environment. There's going to be another, uh, community similar to this in the mix. Kiln is going to build some co-work space at the old Plum Tree Plaza. Um, and so this will be more of that, but it's big enough that should there be a company that evolves from startup into, you know, whatever that transition phase is, there will be space that they could provide fifty thousand square feet for a company that has decided they want to stay in Provo. And frankly, those are the kinds of companies that I think we want to identify and we want to be supportive of keeping. Some people are just going to need to be in Lehigh. Um, but the ones that want to stay, we want to have space like this to keep them, I'm sorry.
No, no, the reason I was asking is I used to work, um, east of university mall.
Uh huh.
And there's, um, at a building there and we've vacated the building now and the building next to it is all, um, it's not a skyscraper, but a tall building and it's been empty for years. I mean, it's just nobody's.
A micro focus building?
I don't know what the name of it, it's just right, you know, just right up there by the mall. Do you know by Fossa and then, yeah, and it just, nobody wants.
Oh, are you in Orem or in Provo?
It's in Orem, but I'm just saying, I watched this building, just nobody wants to rent it. And maybe it's because a lot of them are remote now, I don't know. But I just wondered if, you know, if that's the case.
There's a high demand for office space.
Okay.
And there's not a lot of it available. And, you know, for example, Freedom Commons is being built at downtown Provo. It's the first class A office space that's been built in downtown Provo in twelve years. So there's a lot of demand for it.
Is Jamestown full? Do you know, is that like?
For the most part, yeah.
That would be a good.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's constantly transition, but for the most part, it's, it's really well occupied.
That's a good example, I think.
Can I, can I ask a question while you've got you? So my understanding then is the impact to the, the property south is going to be the same essentially whether, because something's going to get built there. They can already put housing units there, multi-use.
Frankly, if you want my opinion, the, the, the impact of these two switched is less. Um, because if the, if that was a residential neighborhood, we would not close Edgewood Drive, we would keep it open. And you would have more units with more cars, um, more traffic throughout all the day. Whereas this will be one concentrated office campus. You'll have, generally speaking, a lot of traffic in in the morning at eight o'clock and a lot of traffic out at five o'clock when they go home. But generally speaking, throughout the day, you're not going to see a lot of in and out. And they're going to access out on a university and go north and south, but they're not going to go through that neighborhood.
Right, and I think that hopefully addresses what, you know, they, the homeowner would just like to know what their impact will be. And I think that's good to clarify that, that's great. Um, as far as the water rights, I can't see how changing this will change that either.
The, the plans that they've submitted to Public Works have been very sensitive to existing irrigation canals and, and water rights. And they can't do anything that would eliminate someone's right to water delivery. You can't, it's against the law to do that, you can't. So Public Works would be very careful about that.
That helps, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm, I'll, uh, yeah, I'll just, uh, we'll, we'll have our own opportunity to discuss this. I, when I look at this, uh, application, this, uh, I know that the relevant history says this was designated commercial in, on, up until two thousand thirteen. And then was changed to mixed use. I think that's relevant. A lot of people complain a lot, nobody wants housing along a major corridor of I fifteen. And so like, it's better suited for commercial. And it looks like, uh, you know, when council changes it to mixed use, you know, there's a hope that there, you know, increased housing, but, um, changing back to commercial and nothing's been done in the intervening nine years, uh, with housing. Um, I don't see that as, as a bad thing. Um, I think about companies that have left the Riverwoods area like Ancestry and, uh, Exact where moved to Lehigh. Yeah, I think it'd be great to have more off, uh, more office space. Or companies can have room to grow. Anyone else want to make a comment?
Well, I, I also feel like we have, um, thought about the residents' concerns with the water supply, uh, water rights and also the impact. And I think that that's true, that this will be less of an impact because you're not having cars constantly with homes, this will be a, a less of an impact. So I think that's helpful to me also.
I, I do have another comment, I, I do think it's relevant, um, I'm, I'm curious. I don't know if it's necessarily relevant for this particular item, but, um, in the other items, what, um, prepare a response, but if, and what contact you've had, the applicant has had with UDOT. Um, because this is certainly an increase of intensity of use, um, from two residential to commercial. So I'd, I'd be curious, um, what response, uh, you've had from UDOT in terms of your discussion from them. I'm not, not now, but in the, by when the other items come up. Any other commissioner comment? Um, I, I'm speaking from my personal experience that with, uh, working with, uh, commercial developers. I've, I've sought out UDOT a, a year in advance. And given them site plans and, uh, traffic counts, I've, I've done submitted traffic studies. And they've, uh, you know, they've made recommendations anywhere from, um, signage on, on the commercial property and, you know, they'll limit when you can do construction. Uh, a light signal is needed. A median raised median, things to control, uh, traffic congestion and, and things that impact safety. So I, just from personal experience, um, that's the way you dot get, gets involved. I suppose we could talk about that, um, a little bit more in the other items, depending how mission is leaning on, on this particular one. This is just the general plan map amendment from mixed use to commercial. Does anyone want to make a motion?
Well. Motion to, uh, forward a positive recommendation to the city council for a general map, plan, map amendment from a mixed use designation to a commercial designation, part of an overall development plan established professional office uses on the site located approximately at fifty-five fifteen North Edgewood Drive, River Bottoms neighborhood.
Second on the motion?
I'll second.
Move forward with a vote, uh, Commissioner Knutson?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
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 If the motion to recommend, uh, positive recommendation to council is passed, uh, five, zero. With that, I'm going to read in items five, six and seven. Item number five, Dudley and Associates request a general platman amendment from commercial designation to residential designation as part of an overall plan to develop a multifamily residential district located approximately at fifty-five forty-four River Run Drive, River Bottoms neighborhood. Uh, item number six. Dudley and Associates request concept plan approval for one nine, one hundred ninety-eight townhome units in a proposed MDR residential, medium density residential zone located approximately fifty-five forty-four River Run Drive, River Bottoms neighborhood. And item number seven, Dudley and Associates requests a zone map amendment from the RBP, that's research and business park zone, to the MDR, medium density residential zone to allow for a new multifamily residential district located approximately fifty-five forty-four North, North River Run Drive, River Bottoms neighborhood. Mr. Ardmore?
Okay, thank you. All right, so there's a little bit more content with, with this one than the last one. So, uh, starts off kind of the same. Uh, we've got our, our general plan amendment is the, the first of the things you read in, uh, as alluded to in the previous item. Uh, this property is currently commercial in, in the general plan designation and, uh, primarily vacant land, uh, Ron Last Park to the south, uh, had been an improved area, uh, with landscaping and trees and trail there. Uh, so the, the general plan amendment is to change that to residential, uh, shifting that again from against University Avenue and Edgewood Drive, shifting that residential over here, uh, off the major highway and into the, the quieter area here. Um, providing the residential uh, designation for, for this part of the city. Um, and that is in anticipation of a townhome apartment community. So along with this general plan amendment change is, uh, a res, a zone map amendment, uh, from the RBP to the MDR. Uh, you could see on this map that, again, as I pointed out, that this property is currently MDR. Uh, so we're just moving that over to these properties here, these two properties. Um, and in doing so, uh, there's photos of the property as it exists today. But in doing so, in making this change to the general plan and to the zone map amendment, uh, it would produce a something similar to this. This is the concept plan. Um, again, it's for a hundred ninety-eight new townhomes. I apologize for the slide earlier, it said two hundred seven. Uh, that was from the initial proposal. It's, as you can imagine, as we've worked, um, with the applicant and, uh, through the staff review process, uh, things shifted around and, and the concept is now showing a hundred ninety-eight. Um, there's a lot of things about this that I, I kind of want to point out. Uh, when, when we're looking at a general plan change or a zone map amendment, the, the question is what is the public purpose of this? Um, staff would point out that the public purpose for this change is to provide additional housing in the area. Uh, but not only additional housing, uh, a housing type that's not prevalent in the area. Hundred ninety-eight townhomes, um, rented out by, uh, a primary owner, um, provides a housing type that you don't see in the River Bottoms. Uh, I think that, um, having these managed and owned by one entity helps preserve this area, uh, this plan and helps the maintenance and, uh, long-term vision of this, this plan to, to keep going. Um, so that'd be the public purpose. And I think that the amendments, uh, proposed and the concept proposed, uh, meet that public purpose. Um, encouraging healthy and balanced neighborhoods, various types of housing inventory and so forth. Um, again, this is a swap of land. Swapping the residential off of the highway up to this community here, uh, where it's kind of enclosed. Providing good connection from River One Drive, uh, providing this new public road are providing this new road through the development and up to what I believe is fifteen fifty east in Orem and out to eight hundred north to, to access, uh, the Orem side of it. Um, so providing a new north-south connection through here, I think is important, uh, part of the concept plan. Also looking at the amenities. Um, so as you can see in the concept plan staff report, uh, with the amount of floor area that they're proposing, they were only required to provide something like twenty-eight thousand area of, of open amenity space. Um, they've, they've gone over that with just the, the pool area and the clubhouse area here. Um, in addition to that is all these additional open spaces kind of spread throughout the, the community uh, with, with good pedestrian connection. Um, so Steph was, was happy to see that, that, um, usually you, you see applicant come in here. Uh, you guys see a lot of these projects where they just meet that ten percent of amenity space. And we were happy to see that somebody's going above and beyond trying to create a, a real community, uh, with these changes. Yes, thank you, Bill. Um, as we were talking now briefly on the last top, uh, last item, this bridge connection here. Um, so this is a existing pedestrian bridge from fifty-six hundred north across the river, uh, to the community. Um, you can see that that space has been left open, uh, without any buildings and that was done intentionally. Uh, so in the future, if things work out to make it happen, funding and so forth, um, we have that space for that right of way, for that width, for the pedestrian bridge to expand to an auto bridge to create even more connection through the, through the area. I think that was an important, um, that was an important factor as we, as we went through the staff review is, is making sure that we. factor as we as we went through the staff review is is making sure that we kind of kept that open in case the city ever gets to a point where we can make that a an auto bridge. See anything else I want to talk about here? They've they've come a long way in in meeting the the design standards for the MDR zone. But at the same time, they've they've also provided some some guarantees that help the city feel comfortable with establishing this zone here with with knowing that we will get a town home product instead of a stacked apartment product, knowing that maximum density won't go over fifteen units per acre. When they come back for a project plan, they'll be they'll be held at these standards. Lot coverage, they'll be held at the, you know, the forty percent lot coverage. Different things like these are are worked out with a developer. These are the first steps to get us there. They would be coming back with a project plan in the future for this this community. But because of these reasons and those listed in your staff reports, we are recommending approval on the general plan amendment on the rezone and on this concept plan. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Can I just ask how the city feels about having it all managed and owned by one? That that would help with keeping it up and maintaining it, but as part of the city's desire to provide the ability for people to have different housing types. Are we, would it be good to have some of that be privately owned so people can own smaller homes, the town homes? Do we have enough of that in the city of Provo?
You know, I think I think we do have, we're getting more of that all the time. Town homes available for sale. We just approved a row of them just south of here on forty eight hundred north for sale town homes. And I think we're going to be getting more of that downtown and around the commuter station. And of course, a lot of the the single family that's being built out on the west side is all all potentially owner occupied. But also all of that could also be rented, right? Though somebody can come in, buy it, and then rent it out. And in a situation like this where you have one hundred ninety eight town homes, you you can imagine the difficulty that could come with having one hundred ninety eight different owners. And if they all rent out individual units, having one yard look nice, one like the next yard look look poor, things like that. But where it's owned and managed by one entity, I think preserves the vision of of this community.
Yeah, I have a question in regards to you mentioned is a maximum in units per acre. I'm curious. Looking back at this swap, this the mixed use. What what type of density would that have allowed?
So the the medium density residential currently on the property that they're proposing commercial land.
Right.
Allows thirty units per acre and it also allows stacked units. So what the developer is doing here is they're proffering some agreements with the city that they'll hold themselves with the MDR zone on this property to less than that. They'll hold themselves down to that that fifteen units per acre. So did, yeah, so two hundred twenty units were a concept on the current MDR against University Avenue. And that's that's how the zoning was in place because somebody came forward with that concept of apartment, two hundred twenty apartments. They never followed through with that, but that kind of gives you the comparison.
Also, when I was looking at aerial photos on the south side of this, I'm just going to call it little finger.
And see which one gives you the best aerial, sorry.
These aerials I have show some little trailways. At least one.
Yes.
Two cutting across and and Provo River Trail and and I'm wondering, it looks like in the site plans, those are those won't exist anymore. So maybe losing some inner connectivity.
No, I
Maybe maybe it's just in design, like instead of having these windy cuts through the the finger, you're looks like with the new site plan, you're just getting straight walkways. I don't.
No, I think they do exist, though. I think they not only exist, but they are expanded. So if you go back to this one, you can see kind of this this trail here, right? That what's your what you're pointing to? That comes up through here to the bridge. In this concept, sorry. In this concept, you you still have the trail against the river that leads to the bridge. You have a couple trails out there that would lead to the bridge. But then they expand to kind of go out against the street and kind of continue to go through the whole community. Out to the recreation pool area and so forth. So I don't think that we're losing anything there. I I think that's actually an improvement on on the current condition. And I I failed to show you the elevations. I'm sorry, I forgot I put these slides in here. So these are some conceptual elevations of the two different building types, just to mix up the architectural architecture through, as you can imagine, going through one hundred ninety eight town homes, if they're all looking the same, that can get kind of repetitive. These went through the design review committee a couple of weeks ago. The design review committee liked them. They approved, they approved these conceptual elevations for this development.
Are these mainly, are these for students, married, young married families? What are these supposedly?
So it's it's family occupancy, which in which in Provo means they could be rented by one family or three unrelated singles. So you you'd have opportunity for both of those things. But as as Keith spoke about earlier, I think a lot of the the plan is to provide a lot of the housing for the 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 office.
Have they considered them at all for for sale or just rent only?
Um, you'd have to ask the applicant. I've I've only heard of rental.
Floodplain area, is it?
No, no, the the floodplain doesn't reach to to any of these residential units.
Any other questions for the for planning staff?
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Ardmore. Will the applicant please come up? Like to make a statement, you could take this time to address the items on five, six, and seven. Maybe address some of the issues we might have brought up in the earlier discussion or things you've heard in our questions.
Yeah, so if I could take a minute, my name is Jason White.
Yeah, your name and
Fifty is Capital Management and we are, Folger Pratt is our developer. And so I just wanted to give a little bit of context here because I think it's really important. We, you know, the investor group are long term fans of Provo. And so a lot of the thought, this has taken years to get us here. And a lot of that was just brainstorming in house, not necessarily with anybody else. And, you know, I think everybody hearing what our goals are, I think, is is pretty critical because I think that that leads to the, you know, the long term kind of enjoyment of Provo residents, and that's really our goal. And so a couple of things that I I wanted to touch on. I moved here three years ago from New York. I went to school here, always loved Provo, and this corridor, I think, is critically important. And there's a few things that we collectively, as we brainstorm this, that were goals of ours that we were really trying to accomplish. One of them was, when I moved here, there were, there was one house for rent in the entire north part of Provo. And so I thought I was just going to rent a house and buy me some time to figure out where I would live. And I had one option. And that's not how other markets function. They they have an entire spectrum of, you know, so, you know, small apartment, larger apartment, nicer apartment, then you graduate from apartments. When you graduate from apartments here, there's really a gap in the market and that gap is this. And it's that I I can't really afford a home yet. There are no homes for rent or section of Provo. So I really, I have no options other than to move out of Provo, which a lot of young professionals do. So that's why you see, you know, so many people move into Highland and American Fork and Salem because Vineyard, because when they get to that point in time where they just can't really afford to move into a home yet or buy a home and there's no rental product. And so we're trying to solve kind of family unit housing for young professionals that aren't quite at a spot where they can afford a house yet. But yet they they want to be here because they work in a business park, et cetera. So that's that was kind of, you know, what hit me when I first moved here was I had no options and that's very unique for all the places I've lived in the country. And the second one was even apartments is, most of them are in concrete jungles throughout throughout Orem and there's a few in Provo where I have three little boys and I wouldn't have lived in any of them because they're either right on Main Thoroughfares, they're in the mall parking lot, they're in the Costco parking lot. So there's nothing that is kind of a quiet community that is very typical of most other markets. And I would consider Provo a market that should have something like that. So, you know, to me, this was this, a lot of this was personal and how I how I kind of collectively with my with my investors arrived at what we wanted. And that's one of the things that we went out to choose developers. We asked them, what do you see here? All the developers except our partners Folger Pratt said they wanted to see stacked parking garages, five stories, maximum density. And so we didn't choose them. That's not our vision, right? We don't, I I mean, obviously we need housing, but I don't think that's appropriate for here. And I don't think office is appropriate for here because as you see, this narrows down to almost like a like a funnel to some degree. And office is a is a pretty hefty use at two points in time. And that makes it very difficult for traffic, whereas when it's homes, you got people going against the flow of of office traffic. And it can really be an amenity for the business park because if if I run a business in Riverwoods, now my now my new employees can live a block away, two blocks away. So there's a lot of opportunity that that we are trying to achieve here. And then I think the last thing is that felt like as you enter, as you enter the university corridor from the north, there's a lot of of rental products that are kind of disjointed. A lot of markets have them. They're they're very uniform, so it looks like it's a purposeful corridor. And and university has been developed over time, so it's it's a little disjointed. And what we didn't feel like was appropriate was a more residential ride on university for the kind of quiet enjoyment of the community that we were hoping for. And second, we thought there should be something that's an entry into Provo. Because, you know, being big Provo fans, we want to like showcase Provo, one of, you know, big building that, you know, kind of a landmark in Provo that we can all be proud of. And so we worked a lot with city staff on trying to figure out how that would work. And so I think we made a lot of inroads there. So I I thought, you know, some of this swapping of 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 zones was important to understand the context of why we wanted to do this. And as you see along the river, there's a lot of of green space. And we we had a lot more green space, but roads took up, ended up taking up more. But this is supposed to be, you know, kind of a quiet community. We don't want to sell it because we want to keep it. Want that gap renter, right, that really has nowhere to go. And and I think that, you know, Qualtrics as a as a point of example would tell you that they lose a lot of employees to living elsewhere. And there's no reason they shouldn't live a block away from their house. So anyway, I I appreciate your time to kind of explain the context of how we got here, but I think it's really important because we're trying to do, we think, what's right for Provo and what's right for the market and what's right for the the gaps in housing. And while we could make these for sale, we don't want to be in and out. We're long term stakeholders in Provo and there's no intent to sell this for, you know, any point in time. And so, you know, our office is just south of this. We have to drive by it every day. The odds of this being very nice for a long time is high. So I can kick it back to our developers or if you have any questions for me.
I have a couple of questions. Just what what? Just real quick, if you put on the record, what what's the square footage of these units and what what's your anticipated rent for the units?
So these are from twelve hundred and change up to about two thousand. The the slice of the rental pie we're trying to get is either dual masters. So you might have, you know, two folks working at one of the companies in Riverwoods Business Park that want to be roommates. And so that'll be a two bedroom, you know, kind of dual master unit, all the way up to a four bedroom, three bath, you know, two thousand square foot, small family that is kind of it, you know, kind of getting ready to buy a house but isn't quite there yet. Rent price point is probably going to be, you know, just a slight notch above the flats at Riverwoods, which is due south of the Riverwoods. And so, you know, we'll probably start in the in the low two thousands and then, you know, kind of increase from there up to probably, you know, high two thousands is probably your price range. So it's basically, we're just filling the continuum from the flats up through, you know, kind of single family. And there's some stats that were out by, you know, Zillow and the Census in May of this year that we're showing. Provo is the tenth most expensive own versus rent market. And so that's wild because Provo is not, you know, it's San Francisco and it's like all these gateway markets and then Provo. And so that would mean if you're moving to town, it's way more affordable to rent right now than it is to buy. And so again, that's why we're filling in that gap.
Any other commissioners have questions for the applicant? Mr. Self.
Maybe just personal curiosity, but we we see the, you know, taking together all all three of the current items, we see the the business park area, we see the residential. I don't see any shopping or anything. So I mean, a true livable, walkable, mixed use environment, was that ever a consideration or?
It's it's part of a longer term plan. We got some plans that we're working on north in the in the Orem parcel or on the Orem parcel. Those aren't as far along, but that's that's really the plan is to have it have these all be synergistic between, you know, the office on the east side of the river, all the way through the town homes and then have the town home residents be able to walk up to kind of like a restaurant row that's up more on along Eighth North, but those are kind of in their infancy. One thing at a time, we're trying to get there.
All right, thank you. Stay close by in case we bring you back up. It's the neighborhood chair for the River Bottoms here. River Bottoms neighborhood, right? Okay, I'll open it up for public comment. Note, you'll be limited to three minutes and state your name and address.
My permanent address is Nine Suncrest Court Durham. I grew up in that River Bottoms area. That's where I spent my childhood. I'm friends with Susan Stutz, the Stutz family who donated their land to the city of Provo so that that area by the river would always stay accessible to people of this city. When I look at this, it makes me very sad. Rental properties on this piece of land, I do not believe serves this city at all. That is a beautiful piece of land right next to the river. You know, it's the kind of land that people in Provo have lived in for a long time and enjoyed that access to the river. You put apartment, that you put that there apartment complex. Me, it destroys the value of that land. It destroys the heritage of this community that have enjoyed that land by the river for a long time. I think Provo can do better than that, honestly. I think Provo would be better served by something else developed on that land than rental properties. I do have an interest here because I'm here with my father. I'm here to help him understand what the impact of what they're doing has on his land, on his water rights, which I would still like to know how those concerns of his are going to be addressed because I haven't heard how those concerns are going to be addressed. He mentioned that the property is north of him. He doesn't know if they have water rights. If they do, he's not aware of it. All of that can impact my father's land. So I'm here to represent my father. But I'm also a citizen of Provo. Like I said, I grew up here. And I think Provo can do better than that with that piece of land and that access to the river. It's 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 a beautiful resource that I think should be preserved for this community and for the future generations to enjoy that land the way the Stutz family did.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's
Good evening, my name's Kevin Curtis, my address is in six oh seven North Temple Shadows Drive. I'm the chief operating officer of Heritage Schools, which is part of the public facilities that is shown there. Hence I have an interest in this issue. I'm not going to make anybody happy today. First of all, we have been in contact with Jason over many months and he's been helping us understand what was going to come. We didn't see this detailed plan until today. Uh, we have had some concept conversations about the impact to the public facilities. Well, Scenic View Academy and Heritage Schools are nonprofit organizations serving young adults and teens who have clinical needs. And so they live there. And there are a number of concerns and impact on treatment by this facility. But there's also concerns about traffic and safety by this. None of the traffic issues really have been addressed. The road going to uh, the fifteen fifty east out eight hundred north, that is a traffic hazard as it is now, no one wants to go out there. So connecting four hundred cars, parking spots plus to go up would be disastrous and UDOT has no plans to make changes, changes there. They've, they've asked for it, they've talked about it, but nothing is in place. Currently, going out to University Avenue on fifty four hundred north, I believe it is, as well as going out to the south by the old ancestry building past Qualtrics and Vivint. At certain times of the day, getting out of there is impossible, takes a long, long time currently. Now we're adding another four hundred some parking spots with cars to try to exit those same locations. So we have to have submitted to the state an evacuation plan. We are worried already about how we evacuate a hundred and fifty students plus Scenic View students in the case of a disaster or an emergency. Now, having said all of that, traffic and safety, we have some concerns about specifically on Heritage School Drive where some of the apartments are, the front door is on the road where young kids could come out and easily access treatment facilities, both of Heritage and Scenic View. That needs to be addressed. We have identified that a concrete or a solid ten-foot-high fence is going to be required to protect both those children, young children in the apartment community or the townhome community as well as the public facilities, because our students are not in a lockdown facility, they're, they're free to walk around and move as well as with Scenic View. So I told you I wouldn't make everybody happy. We support the concept, but there are many design challenges and traffic and safety issues that have not. Thank you for your time.
I want to ask a quick follow-up, there's, just to clarify, there, there is no fencing currently on the property between yours and adjacent properties?
There is some, a ten-foot chain link fence, but it's open, right? Because there's no one over there that's been.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My name's Karen Harris, I'm here with my father as well. I just wanted to mention, which is probably obvious, but it is at the bottom of Provo Canyon, which you're getting all that excess traffic, you've got that stoplight there. Like, it's hard to hear what people are saying, so maybe mention this, but you've got Eighth North and that light, all the traffic coming from the canyon. My parents bought that property because there was a river by there. They've already had that river taken out, all their trees died, they had to replant everything and they lost their river. And it all went to that other big Provo River, but they had a river there for years. But it is a very congested area to bring a lot of traffic. If you've got families and children and just, it's, it's Edgewood Drive is a single road. There's not a lot of room there for extra, a lot of other community. I'd rather see residential houses instead of people being put side by side and on top of each other.
Thank you for your comment.
My name is Ronald Woolley, twenty-eight ninety North Rolling Knolls Drive in Provo. I'm a part owner in the building that is adjacent to this property that was pointed out before, if you look at the map before you, um, our building is right at the end of those three buildings on the right side of the screen, which is actually south. Um, I'm concerned about the same things that the two previous speakers talked about. I also don't see how your garbage truck for Provo City is going to pick up all the garbage from those homes without endangering the children that are going to be living in that area. You're going to have to do a lot of backing up. Um, I don't see a place for a dumpster. But the biggest concern I have is that you may not be aware of something about this property, and I am. When we built our building in about nineteen ninety-six, we were told that it would probably be okay, but we should know that the Provo City power plant, coal-fired power plant had been located on the property on the north end of it by where the substation is now. And that for years they had been dumping the fly ash from that coal-fired power plant on the south end of that property and it was a big pile of, of coal ash. They said that it had been smoothed out and covered with dirt. So it probably wouldn't be a problem for us. And we were sort of willing to take that risk and at the time they dug the hole for our building, I went over there and looked at it. And on the north end of our property in the hole, there was a little less than two feet of overlaying fill and then there was four to five feet of coal ash. And then our basement went through that layer of coal ash and we were able to put our building on soil that was undisturbed. So we didn't have a problem, but I think there's a huge problem for them to put, to stir this area because coal ash uh, contains a lot of really bad stuff. And when you look at the parts per million bad stuff, the one that sticks out to me is arsenic. So if the city puts um, residential housing on this property, they assume a risk. You might say the risk is small, but the exposure is huge. If somebody gets sick and files a claim, it'll be a claim against Provo City. And it'll be a really serious problem. So I implore you not to take on that exposure for the city and to keep this as commercial property where there's no problem. Leave the Ron Last Park, which is covering a lot of this coal ash and there's no problem. If you stir it, it might get into the river, it might make some people sick and you certainly are going to have a hard time selling these townhomes to people that know they're living on top of a landfill of coal ash. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dan, my name's Jeff Germain. Affiliated with fifty-two fourteen North River Run Drive in Provo. I'm going to supplement what you just heard. The coal power plant is the Hale Plant, probably none of you remember that. It was built in nineteen thirty-six. It ended operation in nineteen ninety. About fifty-four years of, of functioning provided about seventy-five megawatts of power, a large fraction of Provo power at the time. So there's a lot of fly ash that was generated and dumped on that property. The plant was torn down in nineteen ninety-three and a few years later, the Riverwoods Business Park uh, began to build in that general area. But the fly ash probably ends uh, a little bit south of Ron Last Park. But it includes, as Dr. Woolley talked about, it includes all of the area that's being contemplated for the townhomes. So I think that's something that needs to be looked at. I realize that before any building permits could be uh, issued, there needs to be some sort of a, an analysis of the, of the soil and geotech and that sort of thing. I, I realize that, but that's something that I'm not sure people are aware of because uh, in, it, it's ancient history for many and right now it's two thousand twenty-two and this plant ended operations in nineteen ninety. So there's, you know, thirty-some years ago when the plant last operated. The other thing I wanted to reiterate is the, is the traffic issue. Fifteen fifty east and Orem intersects Eighth North or Route, Route fifty-two right now. As that road is coming down a hill from Orem to Canyon Road or University Avenue, uh, it starts to curve, there's a, a pretty sharp curve to the left and then there's a curve to the right and then it splits off uh, north to Sundance and south to Provo. And it's a downhill. Uh, and we're talking about fifteen fifty coming in essentially right at a curve across the street from a filling station. And uh, right now there's very little traffic on fifteen fifty. Uh, it, it doesn't really impact the flow. But when we add four hundred vehicles worth of traffic potentially, uh, at some fraction of that number of vehicles per day, potentially coming out into that area, that, that's going to be a nightmare. I realize UDOT has the, you know, traffic engineers, I realize they have beta and they, maybe they've done traffic studies, but I have heard nothing about it here. Uh, and I looked uh, for some of the information online, could not find anything that addressed that, even though it may exist. I realize I have fifteen seconds, but so that, that's, and there's also a tremendous issue with western sun certain times of the day, uh, in that very area that blinds people as they're traveling west on Eighth North going west. Uh, that also indicate that the roadway adjacent to uh, the building that, that Dr. Woolley talked about on fifty-two fourteen as well as Heritage School, that, that roadway will also have a significantly increased traffic for people who want to get to university going south out of uh, this townhome development and around the Smash Dance Academy, or the Credit Union, and then going east to uh, that traffic light at the edge of the business park. Thank you very much.
Any other public comment? We'd really love to hear from you. Go ahead.
I'd like to clarify one thing, we have uh, over four hundred employees, not all are on our campus at the same time, but we employ a lot of people for most of our city, Provo City employee or residents, of course. Two hundred are on campus uh, during the day, coming and going. And the City View has not as many, but I just want to make sure you understood, that's already current traffic.
Just to note, we, we normally don't let the public have two bites of the apple, if you can keep your comment limited.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Questions, one, I, I would still like to understand how my father's concerns are going to be addressed, what's the process for that?
I, I, I think we've had the developer respond to those things uh, to the best of their ability.
What does that mean? Does he get in contact with my father? Is there, is there a follow-up meeting? What is the process for those questions to be addressed?
All right, I'm yeah, number, number one, I, I just want to make clear while we're doing this hearing that um, the applicant already has development rights. A- as was noted before, the south portion of the, the, the south parcels is entitled to uh, mixed-use residential at density up to thirty units per acre. Uh, and this, this particular parcel in question is owned commercial and can be quite an intense use. Those are existing rights, so, and, and we're limited in our review to uh, what the to, to what the ordinances allow, so uh,
So, so how do we, how do those um, questions, because we asked in section four and now again, what is the process for him getting his concerns? Is that through the developer? Does he contact him? Is that through the city? He, he was not aware of the water rights for the property north of my father, he was not aware if there were water rights. So whatever he does on that land, if, if he swat, if he flips it the way he's describing, all of that's going to impact his water rights, my father's. How does he get information to understand how that's going to affect his? City give him that? Does a developer give him that? And what's that process for giving him that information?
You know, I'm not particularly inclined to, to give a response to that. Um, I
You are with Provo City.
I'm an attorney, but I'm, I'm not your attorney.
But you are with Provo City and the rights come through Provo City, so who does he go to to have that addressed?
Good, I, I know you can go to the state engineer, um, they, they manage water rights in the state. Yeah, the state wa- uh, water engineer.
So, so how does this work with the developer? Said that he wasn't aware of the water rights property and whatever happens to the water rights on the property north of him is going to affect his property rights most likely.
Right, from what he said, he said it wouldn't impact it, isn't that what he said earlier? He doesn't, he doesn't even have water rights, so he's not going to take any, any water array from you. If he did, you'd have a a civil right of action, but I, I, we need to move forward, I'm, I'm sorry.
Can't address that and neither can Provo City, so he needs to go back to and then also rezoning.
Your time's up, please.
Also rezoning.
Understood, your time's up.
And I'm asking a question. I heard many people go over three minutes and you didn't even time them. My question is, what impacts the zoning of my father's land? I'm sorry.
I'm going to ask you to sit down, we've, I've given you
Who can answer my question?
Two, three-minute chances to respond.
Question.
We've had the timer.
Who can answer my question?
Staff reports and we have a hearing.
At this point, we're at the zoning and concept plan stage, so there's uh, technical details that we don't have yet, that's going to come in future meetings with the project plan. Uh, you've now made it known to the city that you have water rights and you want to make sure that those water rights aren't interrupted, correct? The city engineering department, as they review these further plans for the project plan approval, will be looking to see where those water rights are coming from, how it's delivered to your father's property, to make sure that that's not interrupted. As was stated earlier, water rights in the state are sacred, qualified in state law. You can't take away somebody's water rights or delivery that's on an irrigation system. So we're going to have to evaluate that and make sure that it's not interrupted in the project plan stage, which is the next thing that will come to you three or four months from now when we've got all those plans done. As far as the zoning of your father's property, this doesn't affect your father's zoning at all. The zoning is agriculture, it'll stay agriculture. That's it, until you ask for something different. Um, it's also been made very clear to the staff from the very first meetings on this, that traffic was a really big issue. We understand that. Can we get rid of the timer box so we can see the plan? This application was submitted six or eight months ago, the reason why we're now here six or eight months later is because we've been trying to work through a lot of these issues. Yes, traffic and traffic circulation is a big issue. If this uh, charter school um, youth group home were coming in today, they would have to have two points of access based on the number of people that were just students that we were just told they have there and the number of staff they have there. They'd be required to have two points of access. It doesn't have that now. This is going to help the access problem for that school that's existing. As you go through this property to the north to eight hundred north on, in Orem, we all know that is a terrible intersection. We all know that it's unlikely that UDOT will give a traffic light there. We are anticipating that if this project moves forward as planned, that UDOT's going to require a hard island or put a hard island in eight hundred north, so you can't turn left when you come out of this project and hit eight hundred north. That would be a very scary movement, right? For somebody to be turning left there. I mean, it can happen now, people do it now because of the low trip generation. This is going to require some other improvements, okay? Also, because we all know that intersection is not ideal, that's why we've planned for this bridge connection. Someday there is going to be a light at fifty-six hundred north and university. When that light takes place, it's going to make a lot of sense to have a bridge connection for vehicles through this, so they don't have to go up to eight hundred north. It can now go right out to the light at fifty-six hundred university. We do this stuff every day. We do this kind of review every day. We try not to overlook really. Clear problems like traffic. But a lot of these issues will get more detailed answers as the project plan moves forward. Happy to meet with you anytime you would like. I urge you to stay in touch with our city engineers department, remember. We want to make sure that your rights are respected. You're welcome. Thank you.
While you're there, Bill, can you address the ash, coal ash issue?
Again, the, as part of project plan. We'll have them do borings or we'll have them do some type of soil testing to see to what extent there is a fly ash problem. If there is, they're going to have to mitigate it or build around it. Statements that were made about the potential hazards of that are real. And they're going to have to deal with that in the next stage of this. That's where we get into that, those kinds of details. A traffic study hasn't. Well, I think we have had a traffic study done on this, right? Traffic study has been done, but usually even that is done at the next stage because of the amount of traffic that's, this would add. We had that done now.
New public comment?
Just wanted to comment that we were told that there will be technical details that we have not done yet. I suggest you do core samples. You don't have to take my word for this. That, that fly, that coal ash is still there, buried underneath the Ronlass Park. And I suggest that you do not make this change to residential until you know the exposure that the city has.
Right, um. Yeah, we'll invite the applicant back up. I. I'm just going to take a moment to comment. I, the project plan approval, which isn't what this. Is not what we're hearing today. But it, it does require those things. It does require a traffic plan. And UDOT does have to sign off of those things and they can require, I, I personally worked on projects myself that have either been stopped or. Heavily adjusted because of UDOT requirements. And with the core, the core samples, that's, I'm, I'm sure the developer, if they haven't done it now, they're doing it soon. Because if they can't build anything there, then the project's dead and they'll find out when they do the core samples, but go ahead. The applicant was gonna. We'll invite them back up to offer some comments.
Thank you again, again with. Regards to the first question from the, from the Harris family. We, we don't have any water rights and so it's, and that, and that's why I. You know, I, I have no intention of taking water rights or, you know, consuming any, any water. We're, we're going to have to pay an impact fee, you know, for, for connection to city services. And that's, that's how our water comes from. There's, there's no water rights for this property. We also, the West Union Canal runs through the property and we have, we're working with the West Union Canal because there's. You know, they, they have an easement through the property for, for water and, and you know, Provo. I think is purchasing, you know, that, that water from the, the West Union Canal folks that have, that have stopped farming. But that's, that's to my knowledge, the only, the only water issue on, on the property, other than, you know, some well protection zones, you know. Which is our storm water gets treated and. How, how we can discharge storm water because of the well action zone. So we're, those are the environmental and kind of. Water issues that I'm aware of, but obviously we. We're going to go back and look at everything because, you know, we, there's water conveyed from our property to, to the Harris's. We, we have to respect that. There's, you know, railroads and water rights, you know, even precede Utah's estate hood, you know, as statehood. And those, those were in place back when it was a territory. With regard to, to the, the concern on fly ash, we have done a phase one environmental assessment. It talks extensively about fly ash and I'm, I'm happy to like, you know, to submit that. I think I may have, I may have already submitted it. But if not, we're happy to submit our phase one environmental to the city and have them review that. It was, it was interesting that the conclusions drawn in the, in the report are that fly ash is not a. It is not an EPA or environment, like a recognized environmental hazard. And that was, you know, that was one of my first things when I looked at is what's, you know, what is this fly ash? Because they identified it, but it goes into a lot of detail about fly ash. And so we, we have done, you know, environmental on that, so it's, this isn't new news to us.
Thank you. I'm going to close a public comment. We'll, we'll discuss among the commissioners. Love to hear any comments or. Commissioner Kendall?
Well, I believe fly ash is. I think that's actually not true. Fly ash is a hazard, but it's going to be addressed. So I feel comfortable with. There are issues and I think that they have been addressed as far as can be to this point. And they will be continued to be addressed and Provo City won't approve anything until those things are settled. So.
Any other comments? Commissioner Sal?
As far as item five is concerned, what we're looking at is a general plan map amendment from commercial to residential. And I think barring all of the issues that have been brought up that need to be treated and will be treated in the process. Making the general plan map amendment from commercial to residential serves Provo in its aggregate. Very positive way. I think as far as item five is concerned, I think that's, I mean, I think that. I would, I would be in favor of moving that one forward. I know we're trying to take all of these together. There's a lot going on, but as far as item five is concerned, I think on its own merits, I think that serves Provo.
Yeah, I wanted to make a couple of comments. One is in regards to the interface of the property with the Provo River. I love the way this plan engages with the river and enhances access to the river. Because right now, I, to me, if I'm walking the Provo River Trail, I'm not, I'm not going that way. This. When I look at the site plan, I just look at this. Amazing enhancement right along the river. I've, I take my kids on walks along the Provo River when there's areas of access. A place that comes to mind is just south of the Marriott Residence Inn in the Cottonwood area. Amazing, it's just like this where there's lots of green space, trees, benches. Walkways and. And hours there riding scooters, riding bikes, just hanging out at the, the river. So I love the way this engages with that. And there was a comment made earlier that. That it's unfortunate that rental properties are along the river and it should be a single family residential. And to me. I find that real, that comment really hard to stomach because it's as if only a certain class of people. Are entitled to river access. Me, the, the Provo River is accessible to all. For everyone to engage with it, whether they're renters or single family property owners. So the way this plan engages with the Provo River. Appears to let everyone, in fact, more people engage with it and enjoy it and recreate with it. When, when I hear the, the amount of. Rents that they're planning to charge, those are, those are high. Something in the two hundred or the two thousand, the upper two thousand range, that's. That's like at least a five hundred thousand dollar mortgage, right? I'm a little disappointed that that's not something more affordable. You'd get that if they were apartments, but these aren't apartments. They're. Townhomes are a different product and they're engaging with a different. Income level of residence. That being said, it's nice to see. Additional housing types in that area of Provo. Historically, at least in the last few years, we've. You know, the multifamily and housing pop up in southeast Provo. And to me, it just reeks of ghettofication. And it doesn't meet any of the, the goals of our general plan. Nor does it, I believe it meets any of Provo's values. A few other comments, but I think, I think they're kind of addressed. I. I think we'd probably hear more about garbage and dumpsters at the project plan approval stage. Then with the, the traffic and. And safety. I, I understand that the, the project plan approval requires some middles of traffic plants and traffic studies. And that's something that a, a traffic engineer puts their. Their liability on the line, their. Their professional opinions on the line. Same goes with the, the soil, the soil studies. Those are, those are done by geotechnical engineers and they're putting their professional liability on the line. If they, they gave something false, the applicant wouldn't. He'd be all over that geotechnical engineer for bad info, right? Anyways, those are, those are some of my comments. Any other commissioners have any comments like to hear?
A couple of other things. I, I like that this fills that gap. I also appreciate that this won't go over fifteen units per acre where it could go up to thirty units per acre. So this is nice to keep it to a, a little lower density. And I like that it also goes over the required green space and amenities. So I think overall, as far as if we go further with past item five, I think this is a good, a good project as long as all those concerns are answered and that's what will happen in the next.
Any other commissioner comment? Any, would any commissioner like to bring forward a motion? For item number five. Item number five is the general plan map amendment from commercial.
I'd like to recommend. Staff would like to recommend that the planning commission forward a positive recommendation to the city council. For a general plan map amendment from a commercial designation to a residential designation as part of an overall plan. To develop a multifamily residential district located approximately at fifty-five forty-four River Run Drive, River Bottoms neighborhood.
A motion for recommending approval to the city council. Is there a second on the motion?
I'll second.
Let's. Let's hold a vote. Commissioner Knutson?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
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 Motion passes five zero. Item number six is the. Concept plan approval for one hundred ninety-eight townhome units. This one, we're. In the. The concept plan. Anyone want to bring a motion?
I'm willing to make a motion. We approve item number six. Dudley and Associates request concept plan approval for one hundred ninety-eight townhome units. And a proposed MDR medium density residential zone. Located approximately at fifty-five forty-four River Run Drive, River Bottoms neighborhood.
Is there a second on the motion?
I'll second.
We'll hold a vote, beginning with Commissioner Knutson.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Five zero in favor of a. Concept plan. Item number seven. Zone map amendment. Research and Business Park to medium. Residential. Anyone have a motion? Also, just to note, staff. That has recommended a condition that a development agreement is signed.
Motion. Make a motion that the planning commission forward a positive recommendation to the city council. With the condition that the proffered development agreement is signed. For Dudley and Associates request for a zone map amendment from the RBP. Zone to the MDR zone to allow for a new multifamily residential district located at fifty-five forty-four North River Run Drive, River Bottoms neighborhood.
Is there a second on the motion?
I'll second.
We'll, we'll vote, Commissioner Knutson?
Aye.
Commissioner Kendall?
Aye.
Commissioner Wieland? Commissioner Sal?
Aye.
And I vote aye. The. Motion passes in, in favor of. Positive recommendation to city council with the. Condition of the proffered development agreement being signed. That's it. There are motion to adjourn. I'll make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? It's, the meeting is adjourned. It's eight forty-three PM. Thank you for all participants.